Good morning, everybody. Thanks for attending our workshop. July 28th. We're going to get started here. It's past our starting time. So, number one would be the taxicab ordinance and the Kite Jennifer is going to...
Yep.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Councilman Mahaffey and fellow council members. My name is Jennifer McCoy, now formerly Bohack, and I'm here to talk today about taxicab operations in Des Moines. I'm going to start out just by providing a background on our existing ordinance, discuss recent issues with taxicabs, and solicit some ideas from council on some potential solutions. So currently, council can decide if further taxicab service is required by public convenience and necessity in the city of Des Moines. There are currently five companies and 123 cabs operating within the city of Des Moines. You have Yellow Cab, Capital, Freedom, United, and City Cab, again totaling about 123 cabs. We actually issue two different types of licenses. You have a company license, and then you have individual driver's licenses. So all taxicab companies that operate in the city of Des Moines are required to get a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate. This certificate is granted by council. The original certificate is if council determines that the applicant is fit, willing, and able, and that extra taxicab service is needed in the city of Des Moines. The company must apply a minimum of five vehicles and six licensed taxicab drivers. Subsequent annual review and renewal of this company license is done administratively by city staff. However, the license is non-transferable. If the company sells, or if they want to add another owner or operator of the certificate, they do have to come back to council and ask for that action. The other piece of that is our taxicab driver's licenses. Currently require a copy of the DMV record and the criminal record. We review them to make sure that the drivers have a good driving record and are of good moral character as the requirements outlined in our city code. This driver's license is issued administratively by staff through traffic and transportation in the police department, and contention of denials are heard by the administrative hearing officer. Currently dispatch is required to be provided 24 hours a day, seven days per week to all customers, and companies are required to answer all calls that they receive. There's no current requirement for centralized dispatch center. However, the company must have some type of system in place where they record and retain all trip information, addresses for the trip, time the call was placed, that kind of trip log information. Taxicab rates are established by ordinance, maximum and minimums are set. However, in addition to just the general maximum and minimums, there is a night surcharge of $2 per trip that's allowed to be charged from 10:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m., and also a taxicab stand surcharge of $2 per trip. How that works with the taxicab stand surcharge is $2 per trip is allowed by code to be charged for each trip where a steward or extra security or personnel is provided. Where this takes place right now, although you may see taxicab stands at other places like the Iowa Event Center and hotels in town, there's only two places where we actually provide a steward or extra security. A steward is provided at the airport, and where at the airport, they basically collect $2 for each cab by scanning a debit card or a credit card while they're waiting in line for a patron. Then once the patron is ready, then the cab goes off and they move along from there. At the Court Avenue, it operates a little bit differently. Right now, Trans Iowa provides Des Moines Police Department Security at the Court Avenue Taxicab Stand on Friday and Saturday nights. So they had worked through a voluntary agreement with Trans Iowa to provide this extra security through a private agreement. They were just finding that there was just a lot of congestion and maybe unruliness certain times on Friday and Saturday on Court Avenue. They also, Trans Iowa found it was difficult to do that similar method at the airport where you try and scan, you know, where they're all waiting in line, try and scan the $2 each time they come up. So they had proposed to charge a general $5 per cab per night on Friday and Saturday nights for every company that's going to have a cab operating at that taxicab stand, and then just bill the companies accordingly instead of charging the $2 per cab while waiting in line, just because of all the other chaos and amount of people and things are trying to serve at that stand on Friday and Saturday nights. So they operate a little bit differently. Enforcement. Currently, we have approximately about one quarter of a full-time staff person dedicated to taxicab, limo, paratransit licensing, application processing, handling of complaints. Enforcement right now is on a complaint basis. We don't have a routine inspection process. Some of the remedies we do have at our hand is we do find that following up on complaints or problems during inspection based on a complaint is we can suspend the company's certificate or the driver's license, and depending on the activity, we could also file a misdemeanor charge or issue a fine. To do anything more than what we've been doing would be increasing enforcement requires increasing fees, so we just need more people to have better oversight. We have made some recent pass changes to the taxicab ordinance in the past few years. One of them was that $2 per trip fee increase for cab stands, in particular at the airport and the Court Avenue. That was established in 2011. In 2012, administrative, the driver's license denial appeals no longer continue to go through council. They went through the administrative hearing officer process. We have heard approximately eight different denials, and they've all been upheld as denials by the administrative hearing officer. So we are, that process is working well so far. And the other change made in 2012 is that a company, applicants, if they are denied, they must wait a full year before they can apply again. So we have a few upcoming vehicle prior ordinance changes that are going to be coming just kind of due to some budget constraints and the need to do some service reductions related to that. We, in the past budget cycle, we did have elimination of our administrative staff person that handled a lot of the processing of these driver's license and applications. So we are going to be looking at resulting in a service reduction. So what we'll be looking at is to propose upcoming code changes back to council that instead of renewing drivers annually, we'll renew them every five years. As you may be aware, the Department of Motor Vehicles is moving towards every eight years on your driver's license. So this kind of gets us a little bit more in line of what they're doing. However, we will still renew the company license annually. We'll still do that review. We'll still have the reporting requirements required by that company. It's just we wouldn't have that individual driver review annually, be every five years. What we do, and that would be every five years, looking at their driver's record and their criminal record. I wanted to touch on some current taxicab issues and concerns. This probably just highlights some of those that I know council has touched on. One of them is dispatch. So as I mentioned, there's currently no requirement for a centralized dispatch center. However, there's been concerns that have been voiced about no one answering the phone, long time delay to get to a cab, and plane just, cab's not showing up. And another concern is taxicab stand operations. I believe this is mostly in particular to Court Avenue. I've heard that the airport appears to be working well in how it's doing. Trans Iowa has stated that they're not being paid. However, it is a voluntary agreement. There's no allowance in our code to enforce payment to Trans Iowa. So that's kind of one of those issues that's come up. And then enforcement issues. I know there's been concerns voiced, well, how do we know they're charging the right rates? How do we know that they're providing service to everybody? How do we know those things? Well, we don't. Again, we go by kind of complaint basis. Right now, we have, my office typically receives two complaints per year, usually one from a company, maybe about another company, or one from a citizen about a company. For the most part, the companies are handling those citizen complaints internally through their processes. So we're not, we're not hearing them, at least in my office is not hearing them. If we do hear about them, we do follow up immediately with that. So if we did want to increase enforcement, there are, you know, some larger cities like Kansas City have an entire field enforcement section division where they're out there routinely inspecting and following and out on the streets looking and inspecting these cabs. So, you know, you could always go that direction, too. Couple other issues I wanted to touch on. One is nonprofit providers. You may remember a gentleman was here in front of you for Writers Club of America. Basically, he, his service offers low-cost transportation to seniors. He's concerned because he is a nonprofit. He can't afford the high cost of the company license and driver's licensing. I had put some communication back to council saying the staff recommendation would be not to, he originally asked to be exempted from the vehicles for higher code. Our recommendation instead would be to have them go through the process, but maybe look at lessening the fees, or providing an exemption of fees for somebody with nonprofit status. But that's just something that's kind of still out there, depending on which direction council wants to go. Right now, he, if we kept everything as is, he would have to go through our vehicles for higher ordinance and pay all the fees and everything, and full review of drivers and everything like we have now. The other is Uber and Lyft. It's a new technology that has come to many communities around us, from Minneapolis to Kansas City to Omaha. Basically, this is a new technology that uses apps to connect riders to individual drivers. These are people that say, "I want to drive for Lyft, so I'm going to sign up on this app," and some other person is going to say, "I need a ride," and I'm going to connect with this person. So it's kind of individual drivers kind of operating under the umbrella of a Lyft or an Uber. You kind of, you see this car here on the right with the pink mustache. So that's how Lyft designates itself as a Lyft vehicle. You see the car with the pink mustache, so it's kind of... But these companies are complaining that they are claiming their vehicles for higher, they're not vehicles for hire, that they're rideshare. However, patrons do pay for rides. Uber has even been known to do surge pricing during peak times. And so Lyft will operate either with the pricing or a suggested tip, but instead they're trying to kind of get around the vehicles for higher ordinance. There's been a lot of concerns across the country from traditional cab companies about these operators coming to town. Some cities are now changing the ordinances to embrace Lyft and Uber coming to town. Other cities are changing the ordinances to prevent them from coming to town. So council could kind of go either direction. But I do think it's not a matter of if they come to town, I think it's when they come to town. And so this will be something that will be coming up at some point in the future.
Do you have, you know, there was media stories about advertisements for drivers for Uber in town? Do you know any more about those media reports? Has anybody contacted us?
No, I haven't gotten any contact from Uber. I know maybe about a year ago, Uber said, you know, "Can we come to town out of your existing ordinance?" I said, "You would fall under the vehicles for higher ordinance as it sits right now." And that was the last that I heard from any contact directly from Uber, so. So where do we go moving into the future? Well, we're limited right now because we don't have any full-time dedicated staff to enforce regulations, to do kind of continued oversight besides kind of operating on a complaint basis. However, there may be some potential solutions moving forward. Staff would recommend that we evaluate Crown Cab under the current code, determine if the applicant's fit, willing, and able, and/or if we need additional cab service in Des Moines. And then, outside of that process, work on future code changes with stakeholder engagement to address these other issues and concerns. We could look at more enforcement, provide with more staff. We could increase current licensing fees to cover those costs. For dispatch, we could look to change the requirement back to require a central dispatch center. Or we could look at modern technology to be used to lessen the need for a central dispatch center, perhaps looking at the use of an app that drivers could use to hail and pay for cabs and maybe get connected with several cab companies at once through the use of technology. I know Omaha does have a, one of their companies offers dispatch for five different companies. You call one place, you get, your trip could be sent out to five different companies. Now, you still have the option to call a company directly, but then you do have the option to call the central dispatch. Makes it a little bit easier on the user to get a ride. So there's some ideas there. And then the Court Avenue cab stand, we can continue to have it remain as a voluntary agreement, try and get those stakeholders together to work together to agree to pay and on a timely fashion. Or we could look at some type of a request for proposal for a contract to provide the security service and cab stand needs. So what that would look like could be an RFP that would go out on the street, and it basically would say, "These are the type of services the city would be asking somebody to provide." It could be, any of the cab companies could bid on it, maybe other services like an operation downtown or somebody could also bid on this, this contract. It would be in place for, let's say, three years, for a certain amount of time and then renewable, and it basically would provide that security service and cab stand needs along with code changes that would say the city would have a little bit more oversight or requirement to pay or things like that. However, we would need to look to increase fees for that in order to cover both the cost of paying a provider to deliver those services and then the city oversight. So that is a direction we could go. And with that, I will go ahead and open it up to questions.
Anybody have anything?
I have a question. Jennifer, on the Court Avenue, to me, that's really a problem that needs to be addressed. And it's even more so of a problem, you know, we've got Court Avenue that's highly successful, but you have an issue where Trans Iowa's not being paid their fees. We also have the same issue with the additional police down there. So the Court Avenue Business Association's going to need to step up and figure out, you know, how they're going to be a part of this and do their share financially because they're not doing it right now. So I want to make sure that they're part of this discussion.
Okay.
Bill?
Yes, on the Lyft and Uber, or whatever they're called, are there, are there drivers licensed? Do they go through the background checks or anything? In other words, if I was a serial killer and I just said, "I'm Uber and I take rides around town," is there any, I mean, is there any recourse to these kind of people?
Well, from what I've read into it, Lyft and Uber, do they have their own kind of umbrella insurance policies? So their carriers are requiring some type of a criminal background check and that their vehicles be up to a certain standard and things like that. So it's individual by the company, or they're doing those types of things.
So that sounds like driving for hire, then. How do they get around it? That's crazy.
Well, what's been happening in the company, what they usually do is they come in, they operate for free, for tips the first month or so that they try and get into a new community, and then a lot of other communities have basically cracked down on them, try and get them out of town while they're, and then, and then some have moved towards making code changes to allow them and let them go through their process, but be a little bit more open on that. So Minneapolis just recently let them come in and just kind of lessen some of their requirements to let them come in. But then at least they're going through the regular process with everybody else, so.
Sure.
I guess I've got a couple of concerns. The one is, we're not going to check the drivers for five years. I mean, a lot can happen in someone's obviously driving record, personal life in five years. I think that's problematic, and we definitely need to maybe take another look at that. I think five years is too long. And the other one is, you know, we've got one company paying for these taxi stands and cab, you know, and we're not able to enforce it. And I know it was a gentleman's agreement, but I think that we should look at that, and I mean, it's, it's not fair to one company to pay for the rest of the cabs to use the stand. And I just want to echo, and I think mostly everyone probably feels the same way up here. I just, that's not, that's, that doesn't fly in my book. I mean, if you have a gentleman's agreement, let's, let's honor it, or let's, let's put policy into place to make them honor it.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to talk with Jennifer before the meeting. I talked with Larry for a moment, but there's a possibility we could put in the, our ordinance requirement as part of the, again, a certificate that at renewal, they need become a party to agree with all the other cab companies to provide their pro-rata share. And this would allow any party then to go to court and sue for non-payment. This is something we have with Skywalker Association where it requires a new Skywalker agreement that, that a new member of the Skywalker community becomes a party to that agreement, and that they can be enforced to pay their fair share for security on the Skywalker.
And pay the back fee of what they owe for the years that they haven't paid, so.
We'd be looking at some perspective, I'm sure, but that's an option. It's kind of a hybrid where we wouldn't be involved in enforcement, but we'd at least allow a private party to enforce the agreement.
Okay. Do you know, oh, sorry. Just to add on to that, Councilman, oh, do you have a question, Councilman Coleman?
Go ahead.
Oh, just to follow up on that, you know, you mentioned the Court Avenue cab stand is, Trans Iowa would like to charge $5 per cab on Friday and Saturday nights. However, the code only allows a charge of $2 per trip. So we would probably need to change the code to allow what Trans Iowa wants to do because I know that's been one of the concerns from one of the other companies, is how does that work? I charge $2 per trip, but I'm getting charged $5 over here. So that would be something in addition to what Larry has mentioned as another code change.
But they are charging an additional to the customer, they're just not paying it to anybody.
I don't, I don't know if they're charging that fee. I imagine that they are picking up that charge, but I don't know for sure, so. Councilman Coleman?
Mr. Coleman, you know, just on the cab stand, especially downtown, I, I think it has made the Court Avenue district safer, and I think it's made the people that are patrons of that area safer. And for that reason, aside from whatever cash changes hands, that part of it needs to be fair, but I think it's in the interest of the council to make sure that Entertainment District down there is safe. And, you know, I guess I, I guess to date, you wouldn't blame Trans Iowa for walking away from it themselves when they're the ones putting the money out. And I'm glad they haven't done that, but that's certainly their prerogative, just like it's everybody else's not to pay and do it. And that would make for a more dangerous situation for a key area of our community and for a lot of people that do that. When we started talking about this in, you know, 2011, I had a 17-year-old. Now I have a 21-year-old that's stood at that cab stand, and I appreciate it as a parent, and I think most people in the community do. And we need to ensure that that, that that continues to make sure downtown and Court Avenue is safe.
Anything else? Jennifer, I just want to follow up on Joe's comment regarding that checking only once every five years. I am hopeful that you have some sort of a Meadkinism where if there's violations or some criminal activity, they also check and see, cross-check, see if they have a cab license? So you're going to be notified if you have violations coming out of people with those types of licenses?
We don't currently have that in place. I don't know if all of, but we could, we could look at putting something like that in place.
Because, you know, the intake is through our, our system. I don't think it would take much to press a button, "Ah, taxi driver."
You could look, we could talk to the police department about that.
Anything?
Just two closing thoughts. I believe that one, I believe there's a high probability that one of the taxicab companies has changed ownership. I brought this up at the council table about a year ago, and I think we need to ensure that whatever definition we have of that, that if we've granted a license of necessity and convenience to, to a particular operator, not just a corporation, we need to ensure that the council approves any transfer of that. And I've made that suggestion before, and I hope whatever amendments or changes come back, that's, that's part of it. And then just back to this online stuff. I, I think if we're not really careful in the way that we've constructed our ordinance, thinking about that, the whole thing could evaporate. I just went through their website as they were talking. On their website, Uber is, they must have 200 job openings, but I'll bet 40 of them are lawyers. So, you know, they're, they're, you know, they know that they're going to have to maneuver legally to have a right to do this. The Register reported in the last month that they've tried to, you know, they've used advertising locally to hire drivers in Des Moines, including the Register. So we, we just, we need to have our legal team make sure that the ordinance that we wrote years ago contemplates this kind of, this kind of competition.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, our next item this morning is a GIS map demonstration for planning cases. Mr. Ludwig.
Mayor, County, and members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. In the past, past councils and past city management requested some improvements to the graphics that we present for planning cases to the council. In the past, some of those efforts have been to, rather than come to the podium with paper maps, we did try to create PowerPoint presentations of those static maps. But we ran into some difficulties with that, mainly as, as the maps change or as we got additional consent cards in. It required us to then re-scan maps, amend the PowerPoint presentations, and then resend those to the clerk's office or manager's office to be included at the council meetings. And it just created an additional step in our processing that ultimately was not efficient or beneficial. So with the help of the IT department, we actually went back and revisited a lot of our back office operations on tracking consent cards and preparing maps. And with the help of IT, we reshaped those operations and have created a system that allows us to access the database that we maintain from community development at the meetings and to pull those maps up. And we hope that these maps will prove to be higher quality for the council's consumption at the meetings. And while it does not, we will still have a copy of paper maps in a folder in case technology, you know, power goes out or something of the sort, and we aren't able to access the server. But for the most part, I think this is a much improved presentation capability that we have for the council. So briefly, I just wanted to show you a couple of examples. When we pull up on our webpage, just the overall map, over on the right-hand side, we will have the case file numbers. And I've just had a couple of previous cases loaded on here for reference. But we click on that, and it brings up in general, an overall aerial map. In the lower left-hand corner, we have a vicinity map with a shaded area that generally shows where we're located in the city for a reference. Then we have a consent map aerial. Again, the green represents cards that we've received in support, red in opposition. It will outline the subject property in yellow. There are two red lines that are generally around that property. The outer red line is the 250-foot notification boundary from the subject property. The inner red line is the 200-foot line. And under state code, we are required to measure the, the support and opposition within 200 feet of a property. But we do notify a larger area to ensure if there's any error in interpretation of a, of a boundary, that we have a little bit of latitude in that. The other thing that we were able to do on those consent maps is, the system, as we enter in those cards, we update the system, and it calculates the percentages of support, opposition, unsure, and no response from the notifications that we do. So the system automatically calculates those as we enter in those, those cards into the database. We are able to click on the zoning and change to just an overall zoning. The blue would represent the boundary between two zoning districts. So we have a R-160 low-density residential district and a planned unit development district. And then another feature that we have is to go to street view of a parcel, and this takes just a second to pull up. So we, we do have the ability to pull up the street view off of Google for a particular project without going out to the internet again and typing in addresses and that. One advantage, I think, of this in the past with some of our static maps that we've presented on the, here, oftentimes there are questions about a property that may be just, or an intersection that may be just beyond the map that we printed. And with some flexibility, we do have the ability to just slide and move those maps over. we do have the ability to just slide and move those maps over and bring in from the way. I would caution the council in straying too far from the subject property at hand because we are required to duplicate or prepare maps for challenges of court proceedings. And if we start talking about a property that's quite a distance away and we're scanning the map, it may be hard to actually exactly replicate that map. So, we really would urge you to stay close in with the map that's shown there. But we do have that flexibility or ability to, to maneuver the map slightly to get a larger, larger area context. I cannot say enough about the IT staff's work on this. They really worked with our community development department staff to integrate this, this software into our daily operations. And I think that it's creating a better product with, without additional steps. It's, it's just integrated into our process and how we handle those applications and the cards that come in. So, with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Is, is this the same map that would show other stuff we have in our GIS, like sewers and other things, if there were questions about where that flows through?
We have a separate, I guess, system that tracks all those sewers and maps. We don't currently have the ability to pull those up in this system. And this is really geared, the cases and the maps that get pulled up are related specifically to zoning items or, or planning-related items. There, if a question came up, I guess, on another item, we, we would have the ability to probably do an address search through this. But again, it wouldn't pull up necessarily the sewer or utility information.
It's very helpful. Great.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, just a quick comment. It is pretty cool. And I'll tell you when this came about. Remember Menards on 14th was doing some changes and there were traffic concerns? And the question came up, what's over at that intersection? I think it would work better and you could do the drives. Well, that was the meeting that Rick Clark said, can we have a better way of doing these maps than the, the paper ones? It took a while. It's, it's a lot of work. It looks like it's real easy, the way this drops on the screen. It's a lot of work to put these together, but this would have really helped that case. And it, it's just really cool. Very good work.
Anything? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item is Operation Downtown SMID.
Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. Scott Sanders, Finance Director, Assistant City Manager. Thank you. Okay, I get to introduce the topic, SMIDS, and then I'll turn it over to Glenn Lyons and possibly others for the rest of the presentation. There are a few council items on the agenda for tonight's meeting, approving the Operation Downtown agreement, for them to manage the SMID funds for the, from the Downtown SMID, as well as an arrangement for enhanced services within our public parking garages. So, we need to, that, as well as approval of their budget, the Operation Downtown. So, those three items are on tonight's agenda items, so we thought it'd be appropriate to spend just a few minutes with you this morning, further describing those arrangements and giving an opportunity to ask questions of Glenn and his staff. As far as where it fits into the city's budget, we do have four SMID districts. You'll see here, they fall underneath the special revenue funds. So, this is very separate than the city's operating general fund. It is a separate accounting. Each of these have their own funds generated with a property tax, a SMID property tax, and those funds stay within, within those funds, very separate. So, they are self-supported municipal improvement districts. That indicates that they are an enhanced level of community service, often dealing with additional clean initiatives, safety initiatives, and possibly lighting, that you'll see like in Sherman Hill and whatnot. But today's focus is on the Downtown SMID specifically, because that's an instance where the levy, the tax levies revenues come into the city, and we simply have an arrangement to pass those funds on to Operation Downtown. So, that's the one where we have a special arrangement. So, the Downtown SMID was established quite a bit ago in 98, and very recently extended another five years to get us out until 2019. Again, it's an enhanced service. I've listed some of the different things that are provided because of these additional revenues. We have subcontracts with the DCA to perform those processes, if you will, and services. And we have joint funding from other organizations to do yet even further services, like with the Principal Riverwalk is a great example.
Scott, did I read in that that there's some TIF dollars that goes into this also?
Okay, that, that's only because the, the agreement was established prior to changes in TIF law, and they were given credit for the full rate. There was a dollar rate at the time, SMID rate, and it was applicable on TIF value years and years ago as well. With the change in the TIF law, we now have to take the $1 rate that they have and, and funnel it through the TIF. So, we had to create a grant such that the TIF funds would then be transferred on to them as well. So, it was a matter of keeping them whole with the change in law to that we could still have all these enhanced services. Otherwise, their revenue would have been cut in half if we had not given them that grant. So.
I was surprised you read that. I didn't realize that those TIF dollars went into that.
Right. And so, it's, it's a matter of how, how those funds flow. And again, half of that is now captured through our TIF, no different than our city's operating rates. And so, at that point, a decision was made to keep the Operation Downtown initiatives whole and keep those services on going. It's a great, great question. And so, as I mentioned, there was a $1 tax rate for the Downtown SMID prior to just last year, when it was increased to $1.15. But you'll notice that, as I've discussed with, with you before, valuations have come down in the downtown area for, for office buildings and others. And so, they haven't really seen a huge increase in, in revenues. In fact, we're anticipating for the current year fiscal 15, that even with the same $1.15 rate, they'll actually collect fewer tax revenues for their projects. They are now, similar to the city, going to be subject to the state backfill. Anyone with a taxing levy authority, school, city, county, including the SMIDS, are, will be receiving funds essentially from the state called the backfill. That's due to the commercial rollback. And so, that's subject to being removed at any point in time.
Is that in the anticipated revenues?
It is today. I believe in their budget, they've made plans for that to possibly disappear in 2017, somewhat similar to what I'm trying to, to resolve for the city as well.
But if you, if you took that out, the revenues would be down 10% or-
Even further.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to spend just a minute to give you a background on that and then turn it over. If there's any questions from, from me, by the way.
Well, good morning. I'm Jed Fisk. I'm Chair of the Operation Downtown's Board of Directors, and I'd like to make a few, and I promise, brief comments on behalf of the Board of Directors before I turn it over to Glenn for presentation on the budget discussion. In my day job, I, I also serve as Vice President of Principal's Corporate Real Estate Department and been a little bit busy with the corporate campus renovation project that I know you're familiar with. So, between Operation Downtown and that, it's kind of what keeps me busy during the day. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for inviting us this morning to review the Operation Downtown fiscal 2015 budget, and we're certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have. So, with me today are Glenn Lyons and Amy Lego from the Downtown Community Alliance. Glenn and Amy are responsible for managing the business affairs of Operation Downtown. And so, as I said, they'll walk you through the budget presentation. I've had the good fortune to work in downtown Des Moines since I joined Principal back in 1980, so that's a few years ago. And I remember a time when downtown wasn't nearly as nice as it is today. Fortunately, under, the downtown area's undergone an impressive transformation. We've seen significant investment in commercial properties, in residential properties, in world-class public spaces like the Principal Riverwalk, the Public Library, and the Papa John Sculpture Park. I believe one of the key reasons for the resurgence of downtown has been the unique spirit of partnership that exists between the city and the business community. Operation Downtown has been a prime example of this partnership since it began in 1998. It has helped make downtown safe, clean, beautiful, and a welcoming, welcoming place for those who live here, for those who work here, and for all those who visit the many wonderful attractions that downtown has to offer. And Councilman Coleman, as an aside, I have two daughters who are older than yours, and they use that taxi stand as well. And I hate to tell you, but as a parent, that just doesn't ever seem to go away, those concerns.
Yeah.
I believe these efforts have truly made a difference in the quality of life and the perceptions that people have of our downtown. So, I'm very pleased that Operation Downtown and the city have reached an agreement to extend the operating agreement through 2019. And on behalf of the Board of Directors, I want to personally thank each of you for your support of Operation Downtown, and I look forward, excuse me, to our continued success in years to come. So, now I'll turn the budget presentation over to Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We were also asked to make a brief presentation about Ingersoll and Grand SMID, and Jake Christiansen is, our chairman, is also in the audience. But I'm going to go quickly so that we can focus more on questions. Our, our mission is to enhance the quality of life in downtown. Our focus is safe, clean, welcoming, and beautiful. Jed Fisk chairs the Operation Downtown Board of Directors. I'll show you how that board is appointed every year in a moment. OD contracts with the Downtown Community Alliance to manage it on their behalf. I've been in this position for five years. Amy Lego, who is our Operation Downtown Executive Director, has been in her position 12. She manages most of the operation. This last winter, we started managing Brenton Skating Plaza, which previously had been managed by the Riverfront Development Authority. Robin McClellan, who's managed the rink for all of its eight years, is now on our staff doing that job as well. Our bylaws for Operation Downtown really lay out how our representation should be organized. It's a mix of large property owners, smaller property owners, some tenants, nonprofit organizations who voluntarily donate. We have representation from Pope County, the city manager's office, and your council. These are the current members of Operation Downtown. I'm sure you'll recognize many of them and the companies that they represent. We've bolded those that are on the executive committee. Matt Anderson is on the executive committee as a ex officio member, representing the city manager's office. This board turns over a little bit every year, but I'd say the average person's been on this board six years or thereabouts. The main programs that we have are called Safe, Clean, Beautiful, and then finally, Other, if you like. In terms of the safety program, we have our ambassadors out. They're the eyes and ears of the street in downtown. They also manage our off-duty police programs. We have some officers who patrol through the downtown from East Village to Western Gateway Park, the Sculpture Park. But they spend most of their time in the Court District Friday and Saturday nights in the summer. It's become a big operation, where we used to put two officers out there. We now have six or eight out on Friday and Saturday night in the summer. And sometimes it isn't enough. It, on any given night, as you know, your officers are, will come down toward the end of the, toward closing. They've shut down their summer programs, their special programs north of I-235 by about 11 o'clock, and they come down to help us with closing. And they also do their normal patrols of downtown on weekends as well. In terms of cleanliness, most of our, our ambassadors are involved in, in cleaning up the streets. It's an additional supplemental cleaning. It's in addition to what the property owners themselves do. We have good participation from our property owners downtown. People take care of their properties here, and we're coming by in a second pass during the day to make sure that the litter that was dropped that day is picked up. The focus of our beautiful program are the flowers, and you see them everywhere. We've got a, a financial cost sharing with our property owners. Generally speaking, if you, if you've been in the program for a long time, 75% of that program are paid for by the corporations themselves and 25% by Operation Downtown. If you were starting out new this year, it would, that percentage would be reversed. Will help people get their program started. But there's good corporate participation, and it really brightens up some very austere streets. Locusts and Grand in particular, when you get away from the parks, when you move into the core, need that kind of brightening that happens. The, the last program, other programs, we have about $100,000 of miscellaneous money. 72,000 of that is a contribution to the D-line, which offers the free bus service throughout the downtown. And without it, I'm not sure that the D-line would continue as it, as it has been. About 1,000 people a day ride the D-line. We also, in partnership with the Riverfront Development Authority and the, the City of Des Moines Parks Department, provide enhanced maintenance to four major public spaces downtown. Those are the Western Gateway Park from the library to and including the Sculpture Park, the East Locust Streetscape up to the state Capitol grounds, the MLK Parkway, the lawns on either side of the river, east and west, and the Principal Riverwalk. As we, as these improvements have increased, particularly the completion of the Riverwalk and the extension of MLK east of the river, the cost of that program has been increasing. And the way the arrangements work, each of the three parties, the city, the RDA, and Operation Downtown contribute $250,000 a year. And then, if costs exceed that $750,000 total, Operation Downtown picks up the rest. And we're now moving into a period where our costs of maintaining these spaces is well above $750,000. And so, we're in a process of drawing down some accumulated reserve in that downtown maintenance agreement and moving to a period where Operation Downtown will be spending a greater share of that budget. We just renewed the existing agreement for two years, and it's renewed through, at the end of FY16. In FY17, the Riverfront Development Authority will be dropping out of the program. They had a 10-year, $250,000 a year commitment. And we're doing the work that we need to do with city staff. Matt Anderson is leading that. And we're working with Scott Sanders and his people to figure out the best way of, of creating for FY17 a new downtown maintenance agreement. It's going to be tough because our tax base is your tax base, and things haven't been as good as they might have been. But we're committed to maintaining the kind of quality maintenance in our parks and our public places, just as we have in the street. And so, we're confident we'll put something together that will work for everyone involved. Very quickly, we, we gave you the budget. I think the SMID revenue line at the top here, this is the, slideshow's the revenues, sort of repeats what Scott was telling you. Even with our 15% increase in the SMID levy rate, our revenues aren't growing that much. Our expenses, largely because of downtown maintenance, the Riverwalk completion, for example, and some heavy snow removal costs this year have been higher than expected. The one change on the bottom line is a $300,000 increase because we picked up Brenton Skating Plaza, and that's the revenues that are generated. The expenses are greater than that, I can assure you. And when you look at the budget expenses, and we've given you the actuals for FY13, our forecasts for 14, the period just ended, and we're closing our books in the next month or so, and our budget for 15. You'll see that Operation Downtown had a small loss in 13. A larger loss is expected in 14, partly because of this downtown maintenance, the higher cost that OD will be absorbing, and partly roughly half of it is additional snow above the norm. above the norm, and we're projecting a smaller loss in 15. We have about $600,000 in reserve in Operation Downtown, so we're drawing down on that at the moment.
How much?
How much was that again?
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred.
Yes, and then there's another similar amount for the downtown maintenance reserve. We're going through a second of a two-year financial planning process. We did this two years ago. That led to the 15% increase in the rate. We're doing this over the summer with our board, and we'll be looking at revenues, expenses. This financial planning process will be integrated with our work with the city on the new downtown maintenance agreement that we need to have in place for FY17. And so, just like you, we're looking at a revenue base to see how we can grow it. We're looking at our costs to see where we can trim without hurting and hoping that the tax base grows.
In your comments about your assets, you segmented two funds, one for maintenance and then the $600,000 that you referenced.
Yes.
Both of those are on this expense?
They're shown on our balance sheets.
Okay.
But basically, if Operation Downtown has a surplus, it's held and accumulates to deal with bad years, and the same thing with the downtown maintenance agreement. We hold those funds in joint with the three parties, the city, the RDA, ourselves, and that's being used now in part to pay down this rapid increase in the costs of maintaining those four plazas, mostly the Riverwalk.
And when you talk about the rapidly increasing costs of maintaining the plazas, why is that going up so significantly?
Oh, well, the two main ones are the Riverwalk is now finished.
Okay.
Before, we had a few blocks of it. We also had the city maintaining some of those spaces when they're new, like the Sculpture Park when it was brand new, Long Look Gardens, Simon Estes were maintained by the city parks. Those have all been brought into the downtown maintenance agreement, so we share in those costs collectively. So the increase in the size of the Riverwalk, now it's being used very well, which means that there's even more maintenance required, cleaning in particular, and then the expansion of MLK to the east. All these are good things, but they have costs associated with them.
On the revenue slide, which I think was just before that?
Yes.
It throws in the city's contribution, yeah, there you go, under downtown maintenance, I assume that's the second line?
Yes, there's $250,000 from the city, $250,000 from the RDA, and some odds and ends. We have some voluntary contributions from some of the medical campuses that don't pay Schmid, but they contribute, and then we do some work in their neighborhood.
Bob?
Yeah, Glenn, on the previous slide, you had administrative costs were up about $60,000. Is that due to adding to Brenton?
Yes, entirely. That's essentially Robin's costs for managing the skating rink.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if I may, Jake is going to introduce the Ingersoll Grand work, and we'll be brief about that.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jake Christensen. I've had the pleasure of being the chair of the Ingersoll Grand Schmid for its first year. As mentioned in the previous discussion, most of us on the Operation Downtown Board have served for approximately six years. I too have been a member of Operation Downtown for about that same amount of time. It was because of that that, when concerted effort to apply the very successful structure of Operation Downtown to the Ingersoll Grand Corridor, that I was asked to be a part of that effort. So happy to be here today for that. How do I get this to move, Glenn? The Ingersoll Grand Schmid is modeled very much in line with the Operation Downtown. We very much believe why recreate the wheel. Glenn Lyons and his team are an administrative force that take care of all the different components of the Ingersoll Grand Schmid. One of our main contacts is with Bozen in terms of the beautification and cleanliness of the corridor, and Glenn and his team manage that. And as you see below the DCA, we also have a marketing and economic development coordinator position. Ted Irvine, who was instrumental in the creation of this district, worked closely with Glenn, has stepped down, and so the current position has been vacant. I'm happy to announce that we have arrived at a very, we're excited to announce Matt Cohen will take over the responsibilities previously held by Ted. We've entered a different phase. The district has been created, and now I think we're very excited about Matt's ability to take it to the next level. The Board of Directors for the Ingersoll Grand Schmid has a broad sampling of property owners, business owners, residents, and frankly, people just who have worked very hard on the Ingersoll Grand Corridor for many years. I won't list all the names. As in the previous description of Operation Downtown, the executive committee is in bold, but as you can see, it's a great list of people, many who have worked in that area for many, many years. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to Glenn and be available for any questions.
The DCA was asked by former city manager Rick Clark and actually the Restoration in Ingersoll people to manage the Schmid, and we agreed to a two-year contract, so we've just begun the second of two years. And the basic idea of everybody was involved, let's get this started without reinventing the wheel, let's focus on promoting the area, working with economic development now rather than later, because the opportunity is here today. The approach that I've been taking with the DCA is we're like consultants. We do this work on behalf of the Ingersoll Grand Schmid. If they choose not to renew our contract, that's fine. At some point, my expectation is they'll want to hire their own staff and do it on their own, but it's a small Schmid, and it's new, and it's easier to start this way than other ways. And I think it's fair to say that there's a great deal of good work that's being done. And when I talk about accomplishments, they're not just the Schmid's accomplishments, they're the city of Des Moines and city councils, and you'll see how we walk through this, because in many ways, the dialogue that we've had between the community and the municipality has led to these decisions and to future great things on Ingersoll and Grand. The Schmid, as you know, was expanded by a decision of city council to include all of Ingersoll to 42nd roughly, and all the commercial zoned areas on Grand a year and a half ago. A TIF was created as well at that same time. It has not been turned on as yet. It's a 20-year, it's an economic TIF. It has a 20-year cycle. We're waiting for the first big investment product to start so we have more time to collect the increment over time, but my expectation is that within the next year or so, there'll be a request from your administration to turn the TIF on, assuming that that project goes ahead. City council also approved the Ingersoll and Grand revitalization strategy. You approved the Streetscape design. That is a variation on the Phase One improvements for use in future developments. And last year, the Schmid funded the Ingersoll Live event. Things that are in the works include Ingersoll Live on April 20, sorry, August 23rd of this year. We're working now on a Restoration Grand revitalization strategy that will focus less on Streetscape and more on improving the lawns that front the sidewalk. As you know, Grand Avenue has these wonderful lawns and these great trees, and we think we can do more in the private realm for less, because we're not having necessarily to rebuild sidewalks. There'll be traffic control issues that we'll have to address, but we'll be doing that with your transportation people. Jennifer Bohack has been meeting with us on and off as the need arises, and ultimately, transportation makes recommendations about how to deal with traffic on Grand, not the And as these developments move forward, we're expecting Streetscape improvements. We're already getting some, Mr. Christensen's little project at MLK, and Ingersoll has led to an improved Streetscape there. We're seeing east of MLK in the downtown, improved Streetscapes with Frank Levy's project, Ingersoll Square, three and four, I guess you'd call it, with the artisan lofts, and I expect with the come and go projects as well. And we'll see that happening when the bigger projects west of MLK come along. And in time, we're expecting new infill projects, I'll call them, on Grand to pop up. There is a lot of interest in the street, and there are underutilized properties. I'm not talking about the grand old houses. I'm talking about largely the one-story 1950s offices that are on Grand that we expect development to occur in.
Glenn, is it, I think it's accurate that the pilot project that we did between 28th and 31st on the beautification, we've more than doubled other block frontage on Ingersoll with Streetscape based upon since we implemented that?
When the developments that are in the works, that are coming through the system now are complete, we will have doubled the blocks, yes.
Okay, okay. Which is significant.
It's amazing.
Yes, it is.
Anything else? Anybody?
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let's now quickly move on to the Agricultural Urbanism Toolkit, Iowa State University.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Amber Lynch. I'm a planner here in community development. As you know, our department has been partnering with Iowa State University over the past several years on our neighborhood planning work. We are very excited to see that partnership expanding beyond just the classroom into some of the excellent resources and services that are available through ISU Extension. I'm here this morning just to introduce Carl Rogers and Courtney Long from the Community Design Lab. They're going to be talking to you about one of the projects they're working on here in Des Moines, the Agricultural Urbanism Toolkit. This project is in line with many of our city's sustainability and quality of life goals, and they've had participation from myself and several other city staff members on the steering committee for this project. It should be noted, however, that this is just one of several projects that they are working on with our community right now. They are also doing some work in the Capital East neighborhood as a follow-up to that neighborhood plan, and will be doing some things with the Southwest Ninth Corridor as well. Their research and design expertise really brings an even higher standard of quality to these projects, and they do a really great job of engaging not only community stakeholders but also city staff in their processes. So with that, I will turn it over to Carl and Courtney to tell you more.
Thank you, Amber. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Carl Rogers. I'm an associate professor in landscape architecture at Iowa State University. I'm also the co-director of the Community Design Lab. Courtney Long's going to talk a little bit more in detail in the toolkit. She's a design fellow in our lab, and she's the leader on that project. And I just want to highlight a few things. As you see the slide that shows the outline of Des Moines locating the wards and the work that we're currently doing by identifying what we're calling agricultural urbanism tactics. So here, the dots on the map include things such as community gardens, school gardens, free meal sites, and et cetera, basically access to local foods. We're taking these maps and starting to put them together with some information and research that we're gathering about agricultural urbanism to develop this toolkit. We would like to talk a little bit about the lab and kind of ground its research and mission, which will lead into the toolkit. The Design Lab is funded by the university, the Provost Office, College of Design, and ISU Extension. ISU Extension is really important because as the land-grant institution for the state, we are here to help and work with communities, and that's the core of our mission, is to partner with communities using our design expertise and research to create equity and resilience through inclusive, transferable, innovative strategies and tactics, of which the agricultural urbanism is one of those. We're working with communities all throughout the state, all the way from the northeast corner down to the south-central area in Centerville, and we're working with different topics, not just agricultural urbanism, but we're really partnering with communities so they can identify assets and opportunities and using those to strengthen our strategies and tactics. Really, our methodology is three parts. We partner, lead, and create. We want to partner with communities and organizations to address issues that relate to health and wellness, infrastructure and prototypes, and community revitalization strategies linked to other projects that Amber alluded to that we're currently expanding on in Des Moines. We're leading through our design strategies and our research that really is about creating place-based and inclusive tactics. We are an office of primarily designers and planners, and so we want to make sure that the environment is a core piece to it, and the place-based component really affords us to do that. And finally, being part of the design world and profession, we like to create, and so we're using models of research, practice, and education that can really build our research and to shape a new future. So just the three highlighted areas that I want to talk about that we kind of work within and try and connect, health and wellness, we're looking in communities, at trail systems, public space networks, complete streets, and the agricultural urbanism. The thing that's really important about agricultural urbanism that we feel is kind of strengthening it as a toolkit, is making sure that's a system-based approach. It's not just about making a garden. It's not just about, you know, planting vegetables. It's actually about making sure the network connects, and that network connects through the spatial environment. The infrastructure and prototypes work that we do, because we're based within landscape architecture and architecture primarily, is based on sustainability. So we're looking at social connectivity, affordable housing, stormwater management, and again, using our research and design expertise to connect those together to make better environments. The last piece, and I want to make sure I clarify that the three pieces don't operate individually. As designers, we are big on connections, so we may look in one community at one particular strategy, but we're always basing off our work off all three strategies. The last one's community revitalization, and with that, we're looking at community collaboration, implementing strategies from anything from Streetscape improvements, new parks, park connections, park networks, but also recovery from disasters, whether that's flooding or whatnot. So we're really trying to see how communities can revitalize based upon the work and research that we provide. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Courtney Long. She's going to talk more in detail about the toolkit, which we received funding from the Aldo Leopold Center to conduct this work. So I'll turn it over to Courtney.
Good morning. As Carl mentioned, my name's Courtney Long. I'm a design fellow with the Community Design Lab, and I'm just going to talk a little bit more about the process that we've gone through with the Agricultural Urbanism Toolkit and the work we're doing here in Des Moines. So as Carl mentioned, we are working on a toolkit that's granted through the Leopold Center of Sustainable Agriculture, and we currently have this for the following year, and we are in the process of applying for additional two years of funding. So through the grant, we're working with three communities, Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, and Cresco, and we're working with these three particular communities because we're very interested in how agricultural urbanism can be a process for all scales of communities. So with that, we are looking at a holistic food system approach specifically in Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, and Cresco currently, but this includes everything from self-sufficiency, backyard gardening, to community scale with community gardens, school gardens, institutions, as well as things like farmers' market, business development, community-supported agriculture, et cetera. And so the goal with this, as you can see in the bottom of the slide, is to improve food security, resilience, social equity, diversity, and financial stability for the communities we're working in. So as alluded to, we're promoting design as the catalyst to provide this accessibility to food, but we're working with organizations and individuals that are already having movements in the food, local food world. So we're providing that interconnection between physical space, but using and collaborating with the partners that already exist with the social connections. So our Agricultural Urbanism Toolkit is a strategy to promote these different tactics, to promote this local food revitalization. So we're using the design strategies, as mentioned, through public interest design. So a key portion of our process is engagement. So we are creating steering committees in all three of these communities, and we're then... then taking their leadership and expertise in each of their communities and doing research and analysis of the physical infrastructure and the potential of those sites. So this includes four steering committee meetings within the year, but we also promote public meetings, so all individuals from the community are invited to give their input as well. Following those public meetings, we'll again develop design strategies for those place-based tactics. So whether that's specific citywide comprehensive plans or neighborhood networks, or in this case, like a particular ward that we want to work with, we can develop those strategies. This will be followed by a final presentation for this year, and then our next steps are potentially to work with policy development to allow for cities to actually implement these tactics, as well as funding strategies and strategic planning, et cetera. So as Carl mentioned, too, we work in several different tactics. So these are just a list, and they're on your, they're in your printout too, so I won't read through all of these, but this is a list of all of the tactics and different ways we are looking to holistically design together in a community. So based on the assets and limitations and potentials that community members are stating, we use these types of tactics to show them the potential for their community. So Des Moines, we've been working with several different organizations and have had our first steering committee last May. And E-Grader Des Moines is a lead partner in this. We also have city planners like Amber associated with us and public department, the Department of Public Health, members of city council and others, as well as neighborhood associations and the general public that are participating in our steering committee. So the strategy that's been developed to date has been a neighborhood network of local food tactics. So there's so many, as you all know, there's so many grassroots movements going on with local food, and so there's a clear incentive to start connecting these grassroots movements. And so we are looking at a neighborhood connection for further development. So to explain what that could look like, I'm going to run through a few different scaled opportunities. So this can include things like better connections to the existing farmers' market, food hubs. We do, again, the E-Grader Des Moines is the regional food system working group here, so better connecting that to the regional amenities of the community, and then just ideas of the rural farms that I have shown in the Farm to ISU cake. City scale, there's been a large opportunity for community kitchens, and this work is currently being done in Des Moines, and so connecting those potentials. Edible and local food has the potential to also connect with green infrastructure, so we're looking at the opportunity of providing edible streetscapes or just closer-knit infrastructure. So things like community gardens adjacent to streetscape, the Seeing Green is an example of a city farm. And then Perth Australia has a really great example of urban orchards. And then Umherz College, that example is just showing how we can connect green infrastructure and stormwater management to also mitigate those types of issues along with beautification and things that could potentially involve local food accessibility. At the site scale, there are several urban farms and community gardens currently in Des Moines, and these again are just examples of how we can continue to grow that. So, and a perfect example, Grow That Farm in New Orleans is a case study that we've looked at, and these are reused train cars that have been taken into, made into offices and cooling agents and things, just very cool, as well as a mobile market that can be used at farmers' markets, et cetera. And then the Capitol of Madison, Wisconsin, this is a picture of their edible landscaping. And then the last is the Soul Food Street Farms, so including vacant lot reuse. So in addition to this, we're moving into Phase Two, so we'll be doing the conceptual designs of Des Moines. So the first picture that you all saw in the introduction slide is one of those designs or iterations of all the pieces that fit together currently, and then we will elaborate on that to show where we can build further connections. We also partner with several organizations in Des Moines currently. We're working with the Des Moines Social Club, the South Suburban YMCA, Easter Seals, and E-Grader Des Moines. So those catalyst projects will filter into this design process as well. The goal is that the agricultural urbanism toolkit will again support this local food system development as we move forward and connect into the other projects that we have going on with Southwest Ninth, CHI, and then these catalyst projects. So to close, what we would love to hear back from you is potentially individual and informal meetings about what you all would like to see in your areas of the city, and invite you to sit on the steering committee as well to give your feedback and help us develop this in the correct direction that's best for the city of Des Moines. We've listed our contact information as well as our website if you would like to hear more information, and we'll open it up for questions.
Question, you mentioned earlier in the presentation that there would be some required policy changes. Can you be specific?
We are working in collaboration with Gary Taylor with ISU Extension, and so we haven't developed the particular policy changes. What we're hoping to do in the second year and third year is to work with his research and develop potential policy amendments that could include a greater resource to have local food, whether it's vacant lots or, I am not the expert in policies, but we are working with him next year to help create those. So there are not specific ones that we have in mind currently.
Do we have any further questions?
I want to thank you for the presentation. It was very good, and hopefully some things will come out of this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? There's Paul, the only one here, for the public.
I think they all left.
So, okay, I guess we'll look forward to seeing you all tonight, council meeting, so thanks for your attendance.
We'll see you at 11:30.
Okay. Yep, that sounds good.[1751.11]